Everyone and welcome to the November 12th meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. I'm Jayman Kara, ZBA Chair. To my right is Vice Chair Josh Neely, and then across the stage, member JP Boucher, member Robert Shaw, and alternate Joseph Patry. We have four regular members of the board today, so if Mr. Patry is willing, he will be participating as a voting member this evening. So tonight, we have applications for both special exceptions, for a special exception, as well as variances. A special exception is a use that's allowed under the zoning ordinance so long as certain conditions are met. A variance application is a request to deviate from the requirements of the ordinance. In order for the zoning board to grant a variance, we have to find that five criteria are met. We have to find that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, that the spirit of the ordinance would be observed, that granting the variance would do substantial justice, and that's to the owner seeking it, that the value surrounding properties wouldn't be diminished, and that owing to a special condition of the property, a fair and substantial relationship doesn't exist between the application of the zoning ordinance to the property and the requirement. So, given that, I think hopefully everybody understands the criteria. In terms of the order of business this evening, each applicant, I'll read the case into the record, each applicant will be invited to come up to the podium, state his or her name and address, and then you have up to 15 minutes to address the board. You don't have to use all 15 minutes, but you can if you wish. Following that, I will ask if there is anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the application. And each person can, again, come forward, come up to the mic, state his or her name and address, and we'll have up to five minutes to address the board. Following that, I'll ask if there's anybody who wishes to speak with any questions, concerns, or opposition. And once again, each person would be asked to come forward, give his or her name and address, and would have up to five minutes. I don't sense that there are too many people here to speak one way or the other, but in the event that there were, then one person at the end could, oh, I should back up. We will then allow the applicant to come forward to, has the opportunity to rebut any comments that are made. And also, the applicant would have up to five minutes. And then finally, somebody who spoke with questions, concerns, or opposition, just one person, would be allowed to come forward and have the last word. So that's the general order of business. And Mr. Falk, is there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Um, Mr. Chairman, there are not.
Then, given that, unless there's something I missed, we'll call the roll. Mr. Neely.
Present.
Mr. Boucher.
Present.
Mr. Shaw.
Present.
Mr. Patry.
Present.
All right, with that, then, I will read the first case into the record. This is the application of Yu Feng Soon, 61 Amherst Street, requesting the following: One, a use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 90, to allow mixed commercial and residential use, where commercial use is primarily on the first floor, with the dwelling, with the dwellings occupying the second floor. This is in the RB zone. And, a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-16E3A, Table 16-2, for a minor encroachment of four feet into the seven-foot required side yard setback to construct an exterior staircase to provide access to the proposed second-story dwelling unit. Again, this is in the RB zone, in Ward Three. And just to note, that this application, a similar application, was approved by the ZBA on August 10th, 2021. However, that approval has expired. And I'm guessing you are here to speak on behalf of the applicant.
That is correct, Mr. Chair. Well? It feels very close. My name is Elizabeth Hardigan. I'm an attorney at Goddison &amp; Hollis, and I am here on behalf of our client, Yu Feng Soon LLC. And as Mr. Chair had said, my partner, Morgan Hollis, previously presented before the board with essentially these exact, not essentially, the exact same application for this property in 2021. That was during the COVID era, and as you would assume or guess, things were a little bit questionable. They weren't entirely sure when or if they would construct. The time is now, and they're ready to construct, so we are back. There's a couple of you that were on the board at the time, but I'm going to go through the whole thing, if you will, if you'll allow me, and we'll go from there. The, as Mr. Chair had said, we're here for two reasons. The first is a variance, which is to allow a mixed-use commercial and residential use in the RB zone, which is to allow the existing commercial on the first floor and add a residential on the second floor. And the second is for a special exception, to allow a minor instruction in the side, minor encroachment in the side yard setback for four feet where seven feet is required, and that is simply for an exterior stairwell to access the proposed second-story, single-family unit. As I said, this property was previously granted, the exact same variance and special exception, on August 10th, 2021. It has since expired. The property is currently developed with a 28-by-60, or 1,680 square foot, single-story dental office located at 61 Amherst Street. If you drive by, it's sort of, it's the smallest building probably on all of Amherst Street, but definitely in that area. Previously, in 1970, the property was granted, the variance, to allow a dental office, and that is why we are here, in the RB zone with an existing commercial use. The proposal is to add simply a second story on top of the building for a one-single-family unit with a private external staircase on the side of the building. The side of the building is, if you're looking at the building, on the right-hand side is where the proposed staircase is, and that's largely due to the design of the property. The property has a, the entrance and the driveway is on the left-hand side, so adding a staircase wouldn't work there. And the back is where the dental office currently enters from the parking lot. So this last, sort of the last spot to put a staircase is on the right-hand side of the building. Granting the requested variance will not be contrary to the public interest. The property has been occupied as a dentist office since the granted variance in 1970. This will not affect adding a single story on top, essentially, for a single-family unit, will not affect the character of the neighborhood. The neighborhood already includes many other multifamily buildings with similar density calculations. This is, as I said, the only single-story building in the area, and neighboring properties also have external story, external staircases. There's adequate parking for the park, for the dentist office, as well as a single-family unit. There are seven spaces available, and based on the calculation of one spot per 400 square feet for an office, there will be four spaces needed, and two spaces for a single family, and we are providing seven, so we have one extra parking space. Granting the variance will not threaten public health, safety, or welfare, as a second-story dwelling unit will be surfaced by separate stairway, physically separated from the downstairs dentist office, similar to neighboring properties, and will also be serviced by public sewer and penachuck water. Creating a dwelling unit above a commercial use to allow a mixed use of a lawfully existing non-conforming use, where other multifamily dwellings exist, will not be contrary to the public interest. For the second-tier criteria, the proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance. The purpose of this zone is residential use, and what we're proposing is residential. We just actually have a commercial use on the bottom, which is rare. While the mixed use is not permitted, the dentist office has been established in the neighborhood for 50 years, and adding a single-family unit will have minimal impact of traffic or density in the neighborhood. The character of the neighborhood will not be changed, and there'll be no threat to public health, safety, or welfare. Substantial justice will be done to the property owner by granting the variance. This lot is currently underutilized, based on what could be, if you raise the whole thing, what you could put there for density and use. There's a fair amount of open space. It's a small building, and there are many multifamily buildings in the area. If the variance is granted, there'll be no harm to public, as the public is accustomed to having dwelling units in the neighborhood. There's adequate off-street parking for both the uses, and denial of the variance would create harm to the owner for an underutilized yacht, underutilized lot. The proposed use will not diminish the values of the surrounding properties. The property values surrounding properties will not be diminished, the proposed use is not have any expansion of the footprint of the building, and the use is compatible with the neighborhood as it is the RB zone. The special conditions that exist on this property that result in unnecessary hardship are, as I've discussed, this is a unique property in that it has received a variance in 1970 to have a dentist office, and that is all it's had since then. It's a small, a single-story commercial building that sits between two single-family homes and has multifamily across the street and behind it. It makes no sense to apply the ordinance against a mixed use for this property when there's no fair and substantial relationship by preventing a residential use in a residential zone. This is a reasonable use of the property. And finally, I believe I touched on most of the criteria for the special exception, but that is specifically just for the staircase that would be encroaching in the side yard setback to allow primary access to the proposed unit. The physical encroachment will be approximately four feet in the seven-yard, seven-foot side yard setback requirement. There would be a minimal, minimal increase to traffic and pedestrian safety by adding a single-family dwelling above a commercial use. The staircase will be set back from the road, and will be similar to construction in color as the surrounding properties. This will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety, will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system by having one additional unit, and there will be no impairment to the integrity or the character of the area, as the immediate neighborhood is residential as well.
Good.
Any questions?
Questions from the board?
I know, that was fast.
Mr. Shaw.
I don't know if I saw this directly addressed, and your testimony seemed to generally allude to it, but is, would the property, simply by its dimensions, allow for at least a two-family, multi-unit building right now without any variances?
I think it would maybe have to be raised, but I, the size of it would have.
No, I mean, just as far as like, not, not just like ignoring the existing building. Does the lot itself dimensionally allow for two, the two-family, multi-unit building? I don't know. Mr. Falk, maybe you know that, or you have to do the calculations.
I think it would be close. It's like 11,000 square feet.
It looks like it's about 208 by 35, so.
208 by 55.
55, so it's.
That's 11,845 square feet, and you need, what, 4,000 per unit? I'm not sure in the RB zone.
RB, you'd need 6,222 square feet per unit, so you'd need 12,445.
It would be close.
Very, very close.
Right.
Okay.
But it's a longstanding, existing lot.
Right, right. I just wanted to, I just wanted to understand that, you know, it's, it helps sometimes just to, you know, since, since part of the request is to have essentially two units, obviously one commercial and one residential.
Right, yeah. So the, the below unit won't be residential, it's grandfathered as a dentist office, and there's no, no plans to change that.
And there, I just add, there are many two or three-unit buildings in this immediate area that are on smaller lots.
Most of the lots there are non-conforming, or the uses are also non-conforming.
Yeah.
So it's actually in, it's compatible with the surroundings.
Other questions from the board? Anything else you'd like to add?
Not this time.
Feel free to take a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody in the audience with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Neely.
So I'm in favor of, of this application. On the, the variance side, as we know, actually for both the variance and special exception, they both were approved by the ZBA in 2021 in the same format. And so, so I'm in favor for the same reasons this noted, Ben. You know, at the end of the day, these are all very long, thin lots in that area, many multi, multi-story, multifamily buildings there. This is just going to make it look more like the buildings around it. We have this dentist office from the 1970s. That's like unprecedented, to have the same business and the, you know, same type of business in the same building for so long, unless it's, you know, a barber shop, in my opinion. But, you know, for those reasons, there's no reason not to, to move this forward. And as to the special exception for the stairway, my question coming in was why not put it in the back, since it's a long, thin lot? That was, that question was answered during the testimony, and it makes sense to me. You don't want to have the upstairs stairway right next to where paying customers are coming through the, the door to the dentist office. So, we didn't hear anything from the neighbor to the right of the property, and there is a fence there as well. So, quite frankly, building the, the stairways, probably not even be noticed in the short term by the neighbors next door. So, for those reasons, I'm in favor.
Other thoughts? Mr. Shaw.
I'm in support also. I don't really think I have anything else to add, though.
Yeah, just added, yeah, I'm also in support, and just to note, you know, the additional of, of one unit isn't going to significantly increase traffic. They've noted that there's adequate parking, and actually, it's making the lot more conforming, because the residential use is permitted, and it's also making the structure itself more in keeping with the neighborhood, which are mostly two, two-and-a-half-story buildings. So, supportive for all those reasons. Does anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Neely.
Would you prefer the special exception first, or the variance?
I'd go with the variance.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for Yu Feng Soon, owner, 61 Amherst Street, Sheet 63, Lot 50, requesting the following: a used variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, subsection Number 90, to allow mixed commercial and residential use, where commercial use is primarily on the first floor with dwellings, dwellings occupancy on second floor in the RB zone. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, in that most of the properties in that area already are two floors. This would just make it conform more to the, to the other buildings that are in that area. The spirit of the ordinance would be observed in that we are taking a, a facility that has been a dentist office since the seventies, perhaps 1970 itself, adding in some, some additional housing residential, which is what the RB zone is all about, so that would make the spirit of the ordinance observed. Granting the variance would do substantial justice in that the applicant does have the right to add on to the property as necessary. In this case, they're, they're adding on residential, which I think is in the right financial reason to make this adjustment to the, to the facility. We have no testimony that the values of the surrounding property would or would not be affected. However, in my opinion, the value of the surrounding property would not be affected. There are special conditions of the property that distinguish it from the other properties, as we noted. This building is one of the few single-story buildings in that area. It has a longstanding business that has been in there. However, they are looking to add some housing to the second floor, which is normal, especially along Amherst Street at the RB zone, to have multiple floors of residential. So these folks should be allowed to add on to the property, as is to make that second floor a reality. So for those reasons, I make a motion to approve the variance.
It's your second, seconded by Mr. Boucher. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Variance passes unanimously.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for Yu Feng Soon, owner, 61 Amherst Street, Sheet 63, Lot 50, requesting the following: a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-16, subsection E, subsection 3, subsection A, Table 16-2, for a minor encroachment of four feet into the seven-foot required right-side yard setback to construct an exterior staircase to provide access to proposed second-story dwelling unit. This is in the RB zone, Ward Three.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Patry. Any discussion? All those in favor? And the special exception request has been granted unanimously. As of course you are aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal, but I think it's rather unlikely. Anybody will object? So, thank you. So now for the second case. This is the application of, and I apologize if I butcher the name, Balaji P. and Vidya P. Iyengar, 3 Cherrywood Drive, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-25D1, to encroach up to five feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback to construct an eight-foot by 38-foot front farmer's porch. This is in the F-U-O-D zone, in Ward Five. Is the applicant present? Please feel free to come forward to the podium and just state your name and address for the record.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. My name is Balaji Iyengar, and that's my wife, Vidya Iyengar. We are the owners of the property, and we.
And feel free, by the way, to pull the microphone a little bit closer, it does adjust.
I know, it adjusted, so you just pull it.
Yeah, just, you could just move the arm, it adjusts. Yeah, there you go.
Oh, I think that's okay, great, okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so we are the owners of the property, and currently, we have two flower beds on both sides of the property, and we are trying to replace the flower beds with a farmer's porch. The current flower bed is seven feet deep, and we want to put eight-feet farmer's porch on top of the flower bed. And as far as to, specifically for the variance, we're replacing the existing flower bed, so it doesn't affect anyone else. It's a private property, only used by us, no one else is using the flower bed. And the, the farmer's porch, it generally adds to the curb appeal, so increases the property value. And we have a lot of neighbors only having farmer's porch, similar farmer's porch in the neighborhood. So I think, I don't think it's going to affect anyone else, is what we think.
Questions from the board? Mr. Shaw.
My main question is, why eight-foot deep versus perhaps six feet? Because, at least, I'll just give you the reason, part of the reason, is that, you know, because your, your home is fairly close to the street, and so the encroachment could be lessened by not quite as deep of a farmer's porch. And I tend to think that a lot of even the new farmer's porches that have gone on, come in on, in the neighborhood, are typically six-foot in depth, and that seems like a reasonable dimension. So is there something that's compelling or driving you to request eight feet for the depth of the farmer's porch?
We just like the bigger space, so it gets, entertain more people, and since the farmer's, the flower bed is only seven feet deep, we just thought, you know, it'll just cover over the existing flower bed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? So could you just speak a little bit to the, the use of the farmer's porch? Is it just really aesthetic, or is this something that you think is from a, you know, enhances somehow your use of the home?
Yeah, we actually planning to sit out and enjoy the outdoors, because our house faces an open space towards the, I think there's a trail there, so when you sit out, you can look at the open space. So we just plan to sit there, maybe sometimes walk from there, or entertain, and that's what we're planning to use it for.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Anything else you'd like to add? You're free to take a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this application?
I'm Vidya Iyengar, from 3 Cherrywood Drive, Nashua. The only thing I would add is, we are people who like the outdoors, and here being, the weather being pretty cold for most of the year, we would like to utilize the farmer's porch during summer and a little warmer months, and entertain people there, like he said, just adding on to that. So, the usage of the space is to also enjoy the outdoor and the weather a little more during the warm months.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody who'd like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Neely.
So I'm, I'm in favor of this application. When I look at the Hayner Swanson drawing, they actually wrote on here, the front bump out is exactly two feet, where the applicant is looking for five feet. So I actually think that the, I would assume the Hayner Swanson, the drawings are probably, just saying it's two feet, is probably more accurate than the request for the up to five feet. Irregardless, you know, this, we've seen many of these applications in this neighborhood. I think, I can think of three or four in the last two years. It's becoming pretty common in this neighborhood. I go by this property all the time. So it is a little bit of a, of a turn there on Cherrywood, so it's not, it's not straight in front of the property. Quite frankly, it's gonna, it's gonna look conforming to several of the other properties around the distance, around that, that area that all have the, the farmer's porches. It definitely won't look out of, out of place, and I, and I think that this, you know, just being two feet within the 25-foot is, is very palatable. So I'm in, I'm in favor of this, this application.
Other thoughts? I was just thinking to your comment, you know, Mr. Shaw, about six versus eight. I'm less familiar with farmer's porches. Is six a viable depth?
I think so, I think so, and I think that's actually what we've seen lately, but what I hadn't thought about, and it kind of goes a little bit to Mr. Neely's comment, is with the bump out, and that extra two feet of encroachment, then, an eight-foot farmer's porch only is six feet, where the bump out is, and that's actually where the entrance is, so that suddenly actually compels me to, to actually, more that, in this case now, that the dimensions make more sense to me, actually. So, that, because that's what I had been struggling with, because it's just, you know, I felt like six-foot would be a reasonable, you know, much like we talk about garage dimensions.
Right.
This has that similar feel, but obviously very different in a way. But now, thinking about the bump out, that actually, now I feel like that kind of was, would be the thing that kind of changes that, you know.
Makes sense. Any other thoughts? Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Patry.
Sure. I move that we approve the variance request for Balaji and Vidya Iyengar, for 3 Cherrywood Drive, from Land Use Code Section 190-25D1, to encroach up to five feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback to construct an eight-foot by 38-foot farmer's porch. We find that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, because this is a minor encroachment into the setback, and the character of the, of the neighborhood would be maintained. The spirit of the ordinance would be observed, again, because this is a minor encroachment that would not impact the neighbors or otherwise impact the character of the neighborhood. We find that granting the variance would do substantial justice, because this would allow the owners to more fully utilize and enjoy their property. We find that the values of the surrounding properties would not be impacted, given the minor encroachment, and we find that owing to the special conditions, the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denying, denial of the variance would result in, in unnecessary hardship, because there is no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the specific application that provisioned to this property because of the, the minor encroachment in the setback and the general character of the neighborhood. And again, because of the minor encroachment and the character of the neighborhood, we find that this is a reasonable use.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Your variance request has been granted. Good luck. Next, we have the application of Andrew and Jennifer Piper, for Ford Don Coster Drive, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-31, to encroach four feet into the six-foot required left side yard setback to construct an eight-by-10 shed. This is in the R9 zone, in Ward Nine. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant present?
Hi, I'm Andrew Piper from Ford Doncaster Drive. I'm looking to build a small shed in my backyard because I am one of the only houses in the neighborhood that has a, just a small, single-car garage, and in the backyard is, is really the only place I have to put it that is, that is well secluded, so it won't be seen from the street. In the backyard, however, it forms kind of a bowl, where on the right side, the elevation drops almost eight feet in the, from the front of the backyard to the back of the backyard. On the left side, where I'm looking to put it, that elevation drop is only about four feet. And that bowl does form kind of a, I'll call it a flood zone, for, in some of the heavy rains, where it, it allows water to collect so it doesn't flood the neighbor behind me. And this is one of the only areas in the backyard that is both level and does not flood at that time. The elevation is already above that flood area. So in terms of, you know, at, at the effect on the neighborhood, this is a very short shed. It only has six-foot walls with a fairly shallow roof, and so with the elevation changes, I don't even think you'll really be able to see it above the fence that is currently around my backyard. So I don't expect it to have an effect on the neighbors. In addition, this is next to another shed of my neighbors that already encroaches on that six-foot barrier, so it kind of puts them back-to-back with each other. Let's see. I believe it, it's trying to meet the, the spirit of the ordinance, in that the only place that I have in my yard to, to put this shed is, is really within that six-foot boundary, even if I were to go into the front yard or within 25-foot setback. And again, it would, it would allow me to actually utilize my garage to store my, my car, or one of my cars. And so that's what I'm looking for.
Questions from the board? Mr. Shaw?
I just, I wasn't sure how to quite interpret, you know, this image, because I wasn't sure what the 15-foot by 18-foot is representing.
So that, the, the easiest way I had to mark where I was going to put the shed was to measure from the back corner of my garage, and so that, that's the 15 feet back, or, or 18 feet back and 15 feet over, I believe.
Okay. I was, thank you. Because I was trying to, I was like, I don't think there's any sort of structure there, so that's what it kind of looked like.
Right. Yeah, that's the, from the back of the current garage. It was the easiest way for me to explain where, where it would end up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? You're free to take a seat.
All right.
If there's something you'd like to ask. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing and open the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Boucher.
I'm in favor of this application. Again, a shed is not an uncommon thing to have, and having driven through the neighborhood and, and recognizing a little bit of what the applicant spoke about, the, the property, and there are other properties with some similar challenges, I also noticed, I won't give you the numbers, but there are, on just Doncaster, there are six other homes that have sheds that are pretty much situated on property lines for, for whatever reason, but I can understand why they're like that. And in fact, as a neighbor number two, which would, this would be most affecting, closest, also has a structure pretty much on the, on the property line. So I think that there is definitely a reasonable, uh, character that, that these are done, and I think because of, again, some of the challenges that property, the properties have on that, on that, on that neighborhood. And again, in the rear of the property, obviously no, there's nobody here to claim that there was any really issues with that. Again, a reasonable size shed, so I'll be in favor of the application.
Any other thoughts from the board? Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm pretty much similarly in support, and I think, you know, especially notable, I think, does, you know, there's the fence, as well as that large structure from the immediate, most affected neighbor, and I, you know, also I think just the topographical part of the property, and, you know, we, we think it was well explained why this is one of the few spots that really makes sense to put the shed, so for all those reasons, I'm in support.
Any other thoughts? Anybody wish to make a motion? Mr. Boucher.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for Andrew H. and Jennifer L. Piper, owners of Ford Doncaster Drive, Sheet B, Lot 767, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-31 to encroach four feet into the six-foot required left-side yard setback to construct an eight-by-10 shed, the R9 zone 19. We find that granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest because it's, it's allowing the homeowner to place a shed because of issues with the property itself, topographical issues, and the fact that, that having a shed in this neighborhood near property line actually is in character of, with the neighborhood. The spirit and ordinance would be observed again because this does not fall outside the character of what is predominantly done in the neighborhood with the auxiliary shed structures. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because it will allow, again, the homeowner to have a shed on his property and have use of that shed for storage, and again, for other reasons based on size of his home and, and the, just the one car garage that he has, for limited space for storage. We find that there is no testimony of the values and the strength of properties would be diminished, so in my estimation, making this motion, I find that there is no diminution of property values by approving this variance. Find that for unnecessary hardship, that, that special conditions to the property that distinguish it from other properties in the neighborhood. Again, there are some lots in this neighborhood that have some topographical issues with the drop-off in elevation changes, and that we find that this is reasonable, proposed use is reasonable, again, because it allows the homeowner to place a shed on his property in, in a manner which, which is, he's able to use and not be affected by any conditions that exist on the property. So with that, again, I make a motion to approve the variance.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Your variance request is granted. Good luck.
Thank you.
You could just leave it there. We'll get it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah, that's great. Thank you. And finally, the application of Jismon Jacob and Deepa Raju Kunnath, owners at 27 Clearview Drive, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16E1 to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 30 feet existing. It's in the R9 zone in Ward 8, and you must be the applicant.
My name is Jismon Jacob, and this is Deepa Raju Kunnath. We are owners of 27 Clearview Drive. So we are actually requesting relief from exceeding the 24 feet within the 20, 20-foot front set, back area for our driveway. So our driveway is in a special condition where we have a very big slope from the road to our garage, and also we have a retaining wall on, if we look from our garage to the road, on the left side is a retaining wall. So what is happening during the winter time is, it's very hard to clean the snow, because on one side we cannot push it through to the other side, so only, we can push only to one side. And now that we have two drainagees driving, and we have an additional car, so if we leave the car in the driveway, it's really, really hard to get any snow out of the driveway, and also we cannot park during, you know, during the snow, storm time, we cannot park the car on the public roads, so obstructing other snow cleaning crew and other things. So we are requesting, if you look at our drawing, our driveway width is currently 19 feet, I think up to 24 is allowed for the driveway. So if we expand, there is a triangle portion I marked in the diagram that is what is exceeding the limit, so we are requesting to allow, allow for that area to be expanded so that we can pave that portion to make an expanded driveway.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Questions from the board? Mr. Neely.
The, I have a couple of questions. The application talked about snow and ice, and I get that. You've got the, the curve, excuse me, yeah, the curvature going downward.
Yep.
I don't, I don't think by adding this extra driveway, that's going to take away the water flow. Are you, I'm not sure, are you planning on re-milling the whole thing, or is it just, are you just adding in the extra pavement? So would you rip, rip all the driveway out and re, you're going to repave the whole thing?
Yeah, exactly.
So you'd be able to change the grading and kind of move it away?
Exactly. So what happened was twice so far, water, because all the water from the road, public road, is coming, and twice it came inside our garage to the basement, so we had a lot of trouble.
Okay.
So we are trying to ma, make a little better the drainage going towards that side too.
Okay. And one of, one of the things that we normally ask, and it looks like you guys are already doing it, is to kind of put some driveway around the side of the, of the, of the garage. You're already doing that. How many cars are we talking about here? Is the garage usable for cars? How many?
Yes, yes, we are talking about three cars, actually.
Three cars?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have for questions. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Anything else you'd like to add?
Only one more thing. So Monday I got an email saying I got automatically approved, so I need to pay, do a wire transfer to make everything. So I know it's a scam, but I just want to bring it to the board.
Wow.
I can show you the email also.
We've gotten several of those.
Yeah, so this information is...
They don't come from us at all. I don't know where they come from.
Yeah, I know, it's in, in the chairman's name, it's mentioned.
Really?
I can show the email to you after, but I think since all this information is public, somebody is getting those information, scrubbing it, and sending just two days before the hearing it happened. Yeah. Just wondering.
They asked for several thousand dollars in application fees, and our fees are not that much at all.
Yeah.
And also, other cities have been getting similar, other, other applicants from other cities are getting similar emails. So someone is doing this throughout the state.
Yeah.
But they're, they're all a scam, and we've notified our IT department, and they're trying to find out where they're coming from, but they're just scams, ignore them.
Yeah, yeah, they're specifically mentioning, only contact us through the email. Yeah, so.
But so the email, is it like disguised to, because if it comes from Mr. Mankar, or?
No, it's just coming from the city of Nashua, but it's saying it, the signature by sincerely Roberti Ballinger, Chairman. That's what...
And he's the, he's the chairman of the planning board. He's not even on this.
Yeah.
Interesting. But they've actually had actual signatures from some people on our staff, too, on these letters.
Yeah. But it has very specific, very, very nice letter with all the details, and these, the reason for asking for the fee, you know, extra fees for covering all the expenses and everything. It's very genuine kind of email, but yeah, I just want to...
Have you forwarded that email to the town staff?
No, I can forward. I have it my...
I, I would ask that you do, and I mean, and I don't want to speak for staff, but my understanding is, is that the Nashville Police Department does investigate cybercrime.
Okay.
And it may be worth passing this on to them. If you're getting it, other people are getting it.
Yep.
And I'd hate to see somebody fall for something like this.
And, you know, the fees that we collect, you know, from you, they're just a few hundred dollars.
Three hundred and seventy dollars, yeah.
That covers everything. That's the notification, the advertisement, all the staff time and paper and everything. That covers everything. We're not making any money on these things at all. It's not a profit, profit.
Someone's looking too obvious.
Someone is, someone is looking too illegal.
And they're asking you, why are, why are the money? Send it for you.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, they're, they're definitely scams, and our IT department has been told, and we forward them to them, and we delete them, we don't open up anything in them, so we're well aware of this, this scam. But thank you for bringing it up.
Yes, indeed. Okay, well, so clearly there is no one else here to speak to this application one way or another, so we'll close the public hearing and open the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Neely.
So, so I came in very undecided about this, wondering why, you know, it's a good-sized driveway, we could probably fit four cars, plus there's the wraparound, you could fit one or two more. I know we've taken a dim view on this in the past, however, the applicant telling us about their flooding issues and that they're going to go rip the whole thing out and replane the whole thing changed my mind, and put me in, in favor of this application. If they were just going to kind of pave the one side, you're still going to have the same problem, water's still going to come down, it's still going to pull to the right, because you can see it's kind of tilted to the right a little bit. So, so for safety reasons, I'm in favor of this application.
Other thoughts from the board? Mr. Boucher.
Likewise, I'm also in, in favor. Again, it's not a full width to the street, and obviously, as we know, this whole neighborhood, if you go anywhere around this neighborhood, you're going to find similar situations where, you know, that they, that the elevation changes can be dramatic on some of the streets, and, you know, I've been in that neighborhood sometimes when it rains, and you just like sheets, sheets of water is pouring down. So I think that for that reason, and exactly like you explained, that he's trying to prevent any more flooding on his property, and this is one of the ways to do it. I think it's a good plan, and I'm going to support the application.
Other thoughts? Mr. Shaw?
I also agree. I mean, I, I think also, to me especially, the fact that it's not the full width down to the street is also, really helps a lot in a situation like this, so.
Yeah, I, I agree. Anybody wish to make a motion? Mr. Neely.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for Jismon Jacob and Deepa Raju Kunnath, owners, 27 Clearview Drive, Sheet B, Lot 2372, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Subsection E, Subsection 1, to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 30 feet existing. This is in the R9 zone in Ward 8. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest in that there, as noted in the application packet, are many driveways in this neighborhood that are larger, several of which are due to the topographical change, significant topographical change as you go through the neighborhood, and we need to be concerned about the water runoff in this area. The spirit of the ordinance would be observed in that they do not have a full allowed width at this time at the, the street entrance. However, what they're going to do is make an adjustment on their dime to widen this driveway primarily for safety reasons. Granting the variance would do substantial justice. The applicant did note that they've had some flooding in their driveway, and that this whole driveway is going to be replained to minimize the threat of flooding. The value of the surrounding property, we had, we had no specific testimony that it would be adjusted, but in my opinion, it would not be diminished. And unnecessary hardship, this house has been negatively affected by water runoff, snow, rain, et cetera, causing potential damage to the house, so the owner is trying to make some adjustments to the driveway to minimize potential safety issues, not just with the water runoff, but with the freezing of the rainwater in the driveway. So for those reasons, I do make a motion to approve the variance.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Patry. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Your variance request passes unanimously. Good luck with your project.
And that's all the cases for this evening. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at the next agenda? And does anybody see any cases of regional info?
No.
I do not either. So that takes us to the minutes. Folks had a chance to take a look at the minutes? I'll note, I was not here for this meeting, so I couldn't say when we're here.
Mr. Patry.
I just said...
I just had one change. Page four, the third paragraph, the board determined the value of surrounding properties would not be diminished. I would add be after, after would not.
Makes sense.
That is my change.
Anybody else have any changes?
No.
If no, would anybody like to make a motion in the minutes? Mr. Shaw? Move to approve as amended? Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Patry. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Minutes are approved. Is there any other business for us this evening?
That's it.
If not, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Motion by...
Seconded by Mr. Shaw. And those in favor? We are adjourned?
Seven twenty.
Cool.